We heard you.
Field Phase 5 subdivision preliminary plat amendment two has been continued by the petitioner, so that case will not be heard tonight. So Jackie, to get us started, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Margaret Clements?
Here.
John Enright Randolph?
Scott Ferris?
Here.
Jeff Morris?
Here.
Cheryl Munson?
Here.
Edward Olman?
Here.
Dee Owens? Jerry Pittsford? Julie Thomas?
She, I received a note that she'll be arriving late.
Okay. And then Chris Cochrane, I believe, is not going to be in attendance. So as of right now, we still have five people in person in a quorum.
Thank you, Jackie. Moving on, would you introduce the evidence of tonight?
Sure. I'd like to introduce the following items into the evidence. The Monroe County zoning ordinance as adopted and amended, the Monroe County comprehensive plan as adopted and amended, the Monroe County subdivision control ordinance as adopted and amended, the Monroe County Plan Commission rules of procedure as adopted and amended, and the cases that were legally advertised and scheduled for a hearing on tonight's agenda.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the evidence?
Motion.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the introduction of evidence. A vote yes is a vote to approve. Scott Ferris?
Yes.
Jeff Morris?
Yes.
Cheryl Munson?
Yes.
Edward Olman?
Yes.
Margaret Clements?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the agenda. As a reminder, we'll need to mention item number four being continued and motion to approve.
It's all moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. A vote yes is a vote to approve the agenda with the amendment of item number four being continued by the petitioner. Jeff Morris?
Yes.
Cheryl Munson?
Yes.
Edward Olman?
Yes.
Margaret Clements?
Yes.
Scott Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we have no minutes to approve tonight, no administrative business, and no unfinished business, so we'll jump straight into new business. First case is REZ-24-4. This is the Thomas HP overlay rezone. This is a preliminary hearing, and a waiver of final hearing is requested. So Drew, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. This is the property at 6056 East State Road 46. It's .74 acres in Salt Creek Township, Section 5. And the proposal is for an HP overlay, or historic preservation overlay. So, the petitioner is requesting to rezone the site to add it to the historic preservation overlay district, which is defined in the zoning ordinance. Most recent Indiana Historic Sites and Structures Inventory, or IHSSI, county survey for Monroe County is available via the state historic architectural and archaeological research database, also known as SHARD, which indicates that the property is rated as contributing. A C or contributing rating is given to any properties meeting the basic inventory criterion of being pre-1940, but that are not important enough to stand on their own as individually outstanding or notable. Such resources are important to the density or continuity of the area's historic fabric. Contributing properties can be listed in the National Register of Historic Places if they are part of an historic district, but do not usually qualify individually. This property did not appear in the Monroe County interim report of 1989. Monroe County, excuse me, the historic preservation overlay does not negate the underlying zoning district, which is suburban residential, and properties within the HP overlay are subject to the regulations of both the zoning district and the HP overlay itself. If there is a conflict between these two requirements, the requirements of the historic, being that the zoning district and the historic overlay district, the more restrictive requirements apply. It's important to note that the HP overlay regulations are concerned with exterior appearance and preservation of historic features and not with other zoning or land use requirements. So this was heard by the historic preservation board of review a number of times, and the ultimate decision was to forward this with a positive recommendation to this body. And they cited two of the criteria that are from Chapter 810-3, which are on the screen now. Number one, being in association with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of county history. And number three, the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction. On this property, there exists a single-family residence and a detached garage and/or carriage house. The property was originally operated as a bed and breakfast called Southern Comfort Bed and Breakfast, and that started in 2000. The property owned, the new property owners that are the petitioners for this case do not have any interest in pursuing the bed and breakfast use on the property. They are going to maintain it as a single-family residence. With the help of many different entities that are involved with historic research and historic preservation, the petitioners were able to provide a lot of information about the site, starting with that the original owner was William Gregg Allen, who served in Company One of the 38th Indiana Veteran Volunteer Inventory, excuse me, Infantry during the American Civil War. The petitioner also provided tax records, photos, and newspaper articles detailing the method of construction of the existing residence and its ties to Arbutus Hill due to its proximity of the area known for the Arbutus Flowers' presence, or trailing Arbutus. As I stated, the property did operate as a Southern Comfort Bed and Breakfast. That was in the year 2000. And also, there is evidence of the property exhibiting architectural characteristics akin to the central passage/hall-and-parlour-type architecture. And that was popular in the southern states, and it was around in the 18, late 1800s. The home does appear to have many of the qualifiers under this style, including two rooms wide and one room deep, stairway, and two interior doors leading to the hall and the parlor, stairway leading to a loft with windows in the gable ends, and built in heavy timber framing with hand-hewn logs. The house has two chimneys, one for the hall and one for the parlor. And as I stated, this style was popular in southern states, and it, which would have made it more rare in Indiana. Right. So here I have the location map in Salt Creek Township off of East State Road 46. In the bottom right corner, I have a snippet of the SHARD database that indicates properties that are contributing, notable, or outstanding within the county. And you'll see all those pink dots. Those are all contributing resources that are identified on that survey. I also will note, this roadway that you see on both of these snippets traveling south, that is the presumed Arbutus Hill where the Arbutus Flower was known to be located. More on that later. Current zoning map, it is Conservation Residential. Site conditions map here, as you'll note, all the slopes are under 15%. Here we have a few photographs of the property and the structures there. On the left photograph, the single-family residence, as well as the right photograph with the carriage house. This is from Chapter 810-3. These are the criteria that the historic preservation board of review must find in order for it to, for a property to be eligible for the HP overlay. One or more of these items can be identified through the review, through the process. And through that, they came up with these two, as I stated before. One, in association with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of county history. And number three, the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction. Here we have the letter to the Plan Commission from the petitioners detailing some of their research into the property, and citing the original owner of Mr. William G. Allen, a American Civil War veteran, and then also information about the historic architectural style of the property. Here we have a rough sketch of the floor plans that include the multiple fireplaces and the hall-and-parlour type of design. And here are a few more exhibits that were included in the staff report. The original land deed to Mr. Allen, as well as property tax records that indicate, or at least give a better idea of when structures were added to the site to kind of date the age of the On the left, we have a snippet from the Herald Times that talks about the Arbutus Hill, a popular, I believe, popular destination of Indiana University students back in the day. They would travel by carriage there to see the flowers bloom. And then on the right, a hall-and-parlour snippet of information that talks about the style of architecture. All right. That brings me to staff's recommendation. Staff recommends forwarding a positive recommendation to the Monroe County Board of Commissioners on the petition's compatibility with the Monroe County Comprehensive Plan, and the recommendation made by the Monroe County Historic Preservation Board of Review. I'll take any questions.
Drew, before you continue, I want to state for the record that Commissioner Thomas and Mr. Enright Randolph have joined us in person, and Ms. Owens has joined us online. And Mr. Pittsford is here in person also. Okay, now, does anybody have any questions for Drew?
I'll just make one comment, since I kind of showed up at the end of the presentation. I did have time to review the packet. I am familiar with this petition. Just wanted to make sure that I stated that.
Any other questions or comments for Drew? Not seeing any. We can turn to the petitioner. If the petitioner is here or online or has a representative that wishes to speak. Have 15 minutes. Not seeing anyone. If there's anyone, we can turn to public comment portion. If there's anyone here in person or online who wishes to speak in favor of this petition, please come to the podium or raise your virtual hand. But if there's anyone who wishes to speak against this petition here in the room, please come to the podium or online, raise your virtual hand.
I do see the petitioners on the call. I don't know if they're able to raise the hand, but they are Creighton and Shannon Thomas. So if they could be promoted so that they can speak, they wish.
Okay. If you wish to speak, please.
No more, no. Hello?
Hello?
Hi there.
Okay. All right. Well, just real quick, I just wanted to thank everyone for taking the time to look over this. And we've been, this has been a journey, and it's kind of still ongoing as we just continue to, you know, find new information and stories about the property and the owners. And we've been working with Drew and the preservation board since March. So this has been, this has been a journey just with the board. And we kind of started this about six, eight months ago. We've only been in the house since 2022, also about two years. And, you know, we're, we were pretty new at this. We really just, we bought the house because we just loved the house. And not really knowing anything much about, you know, the history of the home or who owned it, and just, just kind of one kind of foot in front of the other, we just start to discover things about the house that we think was unique and interesting. And it just took us down this road to where we are today. And it's just, it's just been a lot of fun and interesting. And we just really think that the house and the property and the story has just a lot of value for the Monroe County. And again, I just wanted to thank Drew and everyone at the board for being patient and really helping us along with this.
Okay. Thank you both for joining us online tonight, and thank you also for protecting this property. So while we have the petition online, are there any questions for the commissioners? Yeah, Commissioner Thomas?
I just want to comment that I agree.
I just want to comment that Drew, we really do appreciate your attention to detail and all the information you provided and the great photographs. It's an amazing property, and we really appreciate you pursuing this. So thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we've got one here, Drew. I can't see who that is.
It's D. Allen.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank D. Allen for all the nice pictures taking us on a tour.
Welcome.
Any other, yeah?
I want to thank the owners for coming forward for the nomination. I was on the Historic Preservation Board for 10 years, and we don't have lots of properties that have been brought forward by the owners. And I think you set a great example for others, and I hope, I hope your efforts will ensure others bring forth their historic properties.
Well, thank you. That's very encouraging.
Questions from members of the Plan Commission? Okay. Thank you both for joining us tonight. We can go now to public comment portion. So if there's anybody here in the room, online, that wishes to speak in favor or against this petition, please come forward or raise your virtual hand. Okay. Seeing nobody, we will come back to the Plan Commission for discussion or motion. Does anybody have any comments?
I too find this to be very exciting and very educational. And so I'd like to give case number REZ-24-4 at 6056 East State Road 46. And with thanks to the owners for this historical preservation initiative.
Second.
Go ahead, give that one to Ed.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to send a favorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for the Thomas HP Overlay Rezone, which is REZ-24-4. This does include a waiver of final hearing. So a vote yes is a vote to send a favorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for a final decision. Jeff Morris?
Yes.
Cheryl Munson?
Yeah.
Edward Omen?
D. Owens?
Yes.
Jerry Pittsford? Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Margaret Clemmons?
Yes.
John Enright Randolph?
Yes.
Scott Barris?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you again for bringing this forward, and best of luck on your journey of owning this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to case PUO-24-2, the Cutrite Boat Storage PUD. This is the preliminary hearing, and with a waiver of final hearing requested. So Drew, again, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. This property is located at 8370 South State Road 46. It is one four-acre parcel and one 11.3-acre parcel, and it's in Polk Township, Section 16. It is located in the Environmental Constraints Overlay, Area 3, and is currently zoned Forest Reserve. The petitioner is requesting to establish a planned unit development on the subject property. The intent behind establishing the planned unit development is to operate the property under a mixed set of uses, including boat storage, residential, and office. If the planned unit outline plan is approved by the county commissioners, the petitioner will be directed to submit a planned unit development plan. For those who do not know, a planned unit development is a, is a kind of customized zoning that allows for a combination or unique set of uses that would not normally be possible under other zoning designations. And essentially, the applicant creates a PUD outline plan that will dictate what uses or mix of uses will be permitted on the property, as well as what design standards will be used on the property and the activity there. The outline plan is typically crafted in a way that wherever it falls silent, the rules of the underlying zoning district apply. The petitioner owns and operates Cutrite Marina located on Lake Monroe, approximately two miles north of the petition site. And the petitioner states in their letter that the proposed boat storage facility will allow for storage of boat trailers during the duration of renters maintaining the boat on the water by rental of the boat slip at the petitioner's marina. In addition to establishing boat storage use on the property, the petitioner is proposing to perform a Type E administrative subdivision to adjust the lot lines between the two parcels, thereby creating an Area A and an Area B. Area A will consist of five acres, and while the, the Area B on the south will consist of 10.4 acres. Area A will consist of the boat storage facilities, the residence, and the office. And Area B will be purely residential and will be operated under the estate residential type uses, and is also expected to undergo a subdivision to create several lots from that parcel. The petitioner intends and expects that the residence on, the existing residence on Area A, which is an existing manufactured home, will be upgraded and remodeled to serve as a onsite live-in manager location that will also have an office inside for the business. Here we have the location map and the site conditions map that indicate the slopes greater than 18%. That is the slopes that are protected under the Area 3 of the Environmental Constraints Overlay. Here we have the current zoning map, Forest Reserve. The Comprehensive Plan has it designated as farm and forest. Here are some definitions of the uses that are proposed for this planned unit development, including boat storage, single-family dwelling, and office. As I stated, Area A, five acres, and Area B, 10.4 acres. That is after a Type E to adjust the lot lines between the two existing parcels. In Area A, approximately 1.7 acres will be utilized for the boat storage. And an expansion area of less than a half acre on the north end will be set aside for possible future growth of that use. As I stated, the existing manufactured residence is to be upgraded and remodeled to serve as a residence and office. And then Area B, the southern lot, as I stated, will be consistent with the state residential zone, and the current, with the current underlying zone as Forest Reserve, as a note. Here are some design standards that came about through the petitioner's letter. There will be a detention pond on site, and this was reviewed by the Drainage Board on August 13th. And I have some comments from the MS4 Coordinator included in this presentation as well. Petitioner proposes a driveway access to the boat storage facility and boat storage spaces be gravel in lieu of pavement. So that is one of the design standards. There are no common use areas planned within this PUD. Each residential structure will have dedicated lawn, yard space appropriate for the residential use. And slope areas and other non-designated green space areas on the lots will be set aside in a conservation easement. This is the list of development standards that are also included in the petitioner's letter and outline plan amendment, or excuse me, outline plan statement. Talks about sidewalks not being installed, setbacks, it establishes those. Talks about buildable area as well as drainage, signage as well, minimal signage at the entrance to the boat storage facility compliant with the Monroe County Sign Ordinance. Lighting standards, all lighting will be compliant with dark sky policies. There's also an item on septic, number seven. There is an existing septic permit for the residential structure on the north lot, which currently is 4.1 acres. There is evidence of septic systems for the abandoned residential lots on the existing 11-acre parcel, which is the south area. Septic permits will be obtained for any residential structure built on the properties. The size of the buildable area on the parcels indicates adequate area for locating septic systems. Draft site plan is submitted with this petition depicting the planned boat storage facilities area and the expansion area, location of the residence/office, and the reuse of the manufactured home and buildable areas on the two residential lots. So I will show the draft site plan here in a minute. The office use is noted here as an accessory use to the boat storage facility, and it is a covered boat storage facility, optional development of a small area for covered boat storage. And then Item 10 indicates a phasing plan, which does involve the cleanup of trash, debris, discarded vehicle parts, materials, and tires. And on that note, the petition site, according to the petitioner and their research, seemed to have been a former automotive use on the property some time ago, and it has, you know, since been vacant. There are no longer any structures on that property, but there are remains and debris from that particular use that are strewn about on the parcel. Phase two listed here, development of the boat storage facility and upgrade, the redevelopment of the manufactured home for the residence and office. And then Phase three is the development of single-family homes on Area B, which is a long-term development estimated to be three to five years, which will require a subdivision. Here on the screen, we have the letter and planned unit development outline plan statement from the petitioner and petitioner's representative. This is included in the staff report. And then also, the conceptual site plan that was listed in that letter here as well, detailing Area A as well as Area B. Then a zoom in of, of both of those areas to give you a little bit more detail of what that will look like. Here are some images that were provided by the petitioner. You can kind of see in some of these images the existing debris left over from the previous owner and use of the lot. We can come back to these if necessary. Here are some comments from the MS4 Coordinator after the Drainage Board meeting on August 13th, which includes ensuring the site developed area drains to the detention pond during the development plan review stage. There should be additional water quality treatments, if necessary, based on the potential pollutants, as well as provide drainage easements on the property. Drainage Board also discussed the discharge to steep slopes and the potential for erosion. They also asked if there were any underground storage tanks on the site. And the petitioner, I believe, said that there was a Phase 1 environmental study that did not find underground storage tanks on the site. So on the screen now are a few items that were included in the drainage report, including this development basin map, as well as conceptual development plan that has a little bit more detail on the drainage plan for the detention pond in the southwest corner of Area A. All right. So that brings us to the staff's recommendation. Staff recommends forwarding this petition to the Board of Commissioners with a negative recommendation, citing the following. The proposal for Area A does not align with the Comprehensive Plan designation for farm and forest. Petitioner could petition for a rezone to the limited business zone to acquire the use of boat storage on the northern 4.0-acre parcel without the need for a PUD. The proposal for Area B does not align with the terms of the subdivision control ordinance, and the petitioner did not include language in the PUD outline plan that would otherwise deviate from those requirements of the subdivision control ordinance for a sliding scale or minor subdivision procedure. Petitioner could perform a by-right subdivision through the sliding scale subdivision procedure on the southern 11.3-acre parcel without the need for a PUD. I will now take any questions.
Mr. Enright Randolph?
We used something that was interesting, where they could obtain this use if they went for a rezone to limited business versus PUD. Is there anything else within the PUD that doesn't really conform with our Comprehensive Plan, or that just like is glaring to you, brings up concern?
It's, the recommendation is, is, there's two forms to it. There's the Area A and the Area B. And it is both of those that are not aligning with the Comprehensive Plan, specifically Area A, given that the Comprehensive Plan has it designated as farm and forest, and they're requesting a mixed use of, of business on the site. So that's just kind of how PUDs may come about with respect to how the Comprehensive Plan reads.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Owens, you're next.
Thank you very much. I wanted to ask, did the, did they, why didn't they ask for limited business, or do you not know that?
Was the question, why did they not ask for limited business?
Yes.
They're requesting a PUD because they want a mix of uses, which include a single-family residence on the same lot as boat storage, in addition to an office use on the, on the property.
Okay. I got it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Drew? Yeah, Mr. Enright?
I'm sorry. Jerry put his hand up right when I recognized. Maybe I'm getting the cart a little too far in front of the horse, but would Planning have a recommendation for a potential rezone to limited business, or would you not be able to speak to that because that's not what you're reviewing currently?
I don't know if I can speak to a recommendation until I see a full submittal of materials. But there are other options to maintain a residential use. They're, they currently have two lots. So you could, you know, petition for a limited business lot and then a, a residential lot.
I guess what I'm really trying to get to is, is the PUD that Planning's not wanting to see. I know we have taken steps to kind of limit PUDs, even try to get PUDs and compliances. Or is it the use that's being asked? And I, I get that that's a little hard for you to provide feedback, but if so, that, that's really where I'm going. Is, is it this approach that they're taking with the PUD? Or is it the use itself that draws concern to, for Planning? Is that a straightforward enough question? I understand if you can't really address it, but that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah. I mean, we, you know, we have a lot of different items that we review petitions against, including the Comprehensive Plan, the level of deviation from the existing ordinance, and is the, you know, the, the quality or how well-rounded the request of a planned unit development is. Because you're essentially creating your own ordinance and everything, you know, you have to have it very neat and tidy for it to really be a, a, a easily administered PUD. So there's a lot of things that are, are considered here, as well as the, the other options that are available other than performing a PUD for the property.
And I'll just conclude saying, I like the other options. It does seem a bit cleaner, and it has been kind of a pursuit of ours, or at least my observation of, of the, of the Plan Commission, to try to reduce the number of PUDs and even get certain ones and more of a compliance measure. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enright Randolph. Mr. Pittsford, did you have a question?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Total of 15 acres in what is currently Forest Reserve zoning, correct? How many houses could be built on that 15 acres?
On 15 acres in the Forest Reserve, you can perform a sliding scale subdivision, and you can get two residential lots out of 15 acres. But currently, they have two lots. So they have one lot that's four acres, so that's, and that's currently operating as a residence.
Right.
And then they have a 10, or 11.4-acre lot. 11.4-acre lot could go through the sliding scale subdivision and create two residential lots under the.
In addition to the one house that's already there.
So yes, at the, at the end, owning all of the property, you would have three residential lots.
So, okay.
Mr. Omen?
I'm, I'm, I'm not done. I had. I'm not done, I had processing. Okay. So with the, if they combine the two lots through a type E subdivision, they go with, it's a 15 acre lot, they're still only going to net three houses out of the deal, right?
They would not be combining the lots through the type E. The type E is more or less a way to adjust the shared lot line between the two, to adjust their acreages.
Okay, could they combine the two lots and through a subdivision process and make a single lot for development?
They could combine them into a approximately 15 acre parcel, but then if you perform a sliding scale subdivision for residential purposes, you started with two lots and you end with two lots.
Okay, all right, so that's important. So they're proposing that once they establish the marina portion, and then the remaining 10 acres would have two residences on it?
That's my understanding. The outline plan does not explicitly state how many residential lots they will want.
Okay, do those residential lots have to be single-family, or can they be multifamily?
That is up to the terms of the PUD. It just states residential.
No, I mean by right.
Oh, by right?
Right.
By right, they can perform a sliding scale subdivision, and those would be single-family residential.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm just trying to generate in my mind the difference between the impact of going fully residential and doing a PUD where you have limited business and residential in that same spot. And it seems to me that there's, other than the traffic generated seasonally by the boat storage, the traffic count's not going to be significantly different regardless of what they do. Would that be correct?
Yeah, I would say that's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Owens?
Drew, and I apologize, this might show my greenness to the understanding of Monroe Planning. The type E administrative subdivision for changing the lot line, that is, the way you just kind of addressed some of Jerry's questions, that is not part of the PUD process, that's additional steps that are kind of being done, or that is part of a PUD process?
So I think the questions that we've been fielding so far, if not the PUD, how could they achieve a similar outcome? So I think Drew just described a process that would just be with the regular zoning, not the PUD zoning.
They are requesting, they want to perform a type E to adjust the lot sizes between the two. And the part that I'm getting about with the subdivision is that when you perform a PUD, when you establish a PUD, you have to be very explicit of how that PUD is functioning. And the zoning ordinance, the way it is written now in the subdivision control ordinance, you perform those subdivisions through the rules and regulations within the subdivision control ordinance. If the PUD does not mention anything about those subdivision methods, then it's kind of this gray area, and we're not sure how that would be applicable, how we would administer that. Basically stating that you can't, if you rezonate PUD, you can't perform a sliding scale subdivision, because a sliding scale subdivision is only allowed in select zoning districts, which does not include a PUD. The PUD outline plan, as it exists now, does not make any reference to wanting to perform a sliding scale and deviating from the zones that it's allowed in, in the ordinance as it is today.
Okay, now, but, so kind of referencing some of the commentary from staff's recommendation about the limited business and so on, if they still, if the petitioner still wanted to pursue moving that lot line to have a five acre lot instead of a four acre lot, the type E is still, that is, that's a separate process of its own, it is not part of a PUD. So there's still an option to move that lot line, even if they wanted to go the limited business route, not the PUD route.
Correct.
Okay. Now, I know, so thank you, that's question number one. Question number two, I know that Elevate is not always perfect, but when I was looking at the County GIS, the parcel that borders the northern unit to the north has a sliver of land that comes down in between 446, or the highway, and the square parcel to the north. Is there any commentary, concern, statements, anything about access and permission through that land? Obviously, there has to be access if they're getting to residential, but is there anything in that parcel that might potentially inhibit a business access? If that might be a question?
Yes, I believe that might be a remnant of the parcel fabric transition. GIS, the way that the parcel lines read, I believe that that might be an error. I think that the sliver that you're seeing that comes south is actually part of the D description for that northern lot. I'll have to look into that. But I remember taking questions about this property in the past, and noting that that would not have been an issue with access.
Okay, that's what, I wasn't sure if it was a GIS mistake, or if that was actually how the land was plotted, and if that was a concern that we need to be discussing. Thank you, Drew. Further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Any other questions from the Plan Commission? Seeing none, we can turn to the petitioner or the petitioner's representative to come forward. If you could state your name, you'll have 15 minutes.
You'll sign in, okay. Mike Carmen, Representative Petitioner. Tom Greenman, there at the end is petitioner, and may have comments to add or questions to answer, it's been on your questions. There's everything you do want to talk about. I want to talk about the type E first. That's a non-issue. That's not a PUD issue. That's just a disclosure. Use, in, within the PUD, we describe and define the use areas, A and B, and how much land is devoted that use. We do not have to have the use areas match up with lot lines. In fact, because it's PUD, it's the whole, it's the whole thing, all the 15, roughly 15 acres together. But the preference would be to do the type E to match the lot lines to the use area line, Area A and Area B, that separation line goes, the use area A is going to be roughly five acres. And so the goal for doing the type E, if we do it, would be simply to move the lot line to match up with the Area A use line. And that's not a PUD issue, that's an after fact issue if it happens at all. And that's actually true for the reference to the subdivision. The use area B is restricted to residential uses, and it would be petitioner's hope eventually, get the homes rebuilt there, and there's a lot of work involved, we'll talk about that in a minute, but that the opportunity would be that those would, homes would become owner-occupied as opposed to rentals, because as being within the PUD and not on separate parcels, we cannot convey them, other than to convey the whole 10 acres, and then we still end up with one residential owner occupied perhaps, and renting out the second one. The idea would be eventually, if things would work out, and we could then be able to meet subdivision requirements to carve that into two separate legal lots, although still within the PUD, because the use limitation of residential would still apply, but then that'd be an opportunity to sell them so they become owner occupied as opposed to maintaining them as rentals. That's, again, that's a future issue, it does not really affect the PUD one way or the other at all. So, back then to the PUD issue, and honestly, as I have on occasion been disappointed with the staff report, because despite your number of questions, I yet figure out what they're saying about limited business. Are they saying that they would support it? Are they suggesting that you should? Or is it a trap? Well, drop the PUD, go for limited business, and by the way, we're going to recommend denouncing the limited business, because I cannot conceive in what universe they would support a limited business designation at that location, nor that you would, quite honestly. I mean, your history would say, there's no way. I mean, that whole reference to, so what do we have with the PUD? If the issue is, well, you could do a boat storage in an LB, so you should be petitioning for an LB rezoning, are we not doing that anyway by doing it in the PUD? Because what does the PUD do for you that the LB zone does not do? It limits those uses to the boat storage and an associated office and residential use in that office slash trailer. If we would rezon to limited business and you would support that, look at the table of uses and everything that could be done by right on that property. There's, I cannot conceive in what universe you would support that, or that the Board of Commissioners would approve it. But the PUD extracts out of the LB zone, the boat storage use, to use in a location within roughly two miles of the marina, the principal user of it. And that's, that's the motive for why this site is, not only if you look at the historic use, the area photographs tell a story. I'm going to talk about, and totally what some of the neighbors have said about it, but that this property has been used for commercial activity, some type of auto-based business in the past. You can see in those photographs, boat strewn across the property. This has been, formerly been a boat storage area or boat abandonment area in some cases. It's been a vehicle maintenance repair type business in the past, maybe more appropriately called a chop shop, given what we've been told about the property, the history of what vehicles were being brought there, and the question is the providence of the chain of title on those vehicles, and they were brought there and things were done with them, and then they were abandoned. Tom has way up to a thousand, estimated 1,000 tires that are abandoned and scattered on this property. You can't even see them in the photographs because they're gross, carve them up. He's already started that process. There's a significant cost involved in removing all the abandoned parts, vehicles, boats, debris, and the tires. You end up having to hire somebody to come down for a fee per tire, who's going to pick them up, remove them, take them to where they can be disposed of lawfully. And there's a huge investment in that. And that issue covers the whole 15 acres. Had a single owner on these who, selling it, wanted to unload all of it, wanted out of owning that 11 acre piece with the two residential uses in the past, and all the abandoned tires, and all the abandoned vehicle parts and debris that goes with it. So Tom acquires it, knowing that what he's confronted with on at least that 11 acre parcel is just a cleanup task, a huge cleanup task. There's evidence of locations for foundations of two separate, single-family home type structures, and evidence of where septic fields apparently were in the past. The objective, while not stated perhaps in a number, but is just to re-put those back into use. When you look at the buildable area, and what's the flat area and if it's available, it easily handles a couple residential uses and stay within the buildable area requirements. That doesn't require tree removal at all, because at all, the commitment is a conservation easement to preserve and safeguard the trees and the slopes and all that vegetated cover beyond what might be a reasonable lawn for the residential areas. So we think the PUD does a lot. It does allow the boat storage use, which is the ultimate goal. That's the permitted use, that's primary in the PUD outline plan, is to get the boat storage unit there. It's actually putting back into use what unofficially has been done in years past, and again, the stories, the photographs tell that story. Anecdotally, one of the neighbors who wanted to wax eloquently, I would say, and, oh, he's not here tonight, so he's not going to do it again, about the history of that property, having owned property out there for many years, and some knowledge of the commercial boat or vehicle repair and alterations that were being done on the property, and then now things got abandoned. But it is a cleanup operation, and that's part of this. The PUD covering all 15 acres guarantees the cleanup of all 15 acres. The recognition of a very large use area B, restricting it to residential use, that's the only use listed for that area, does as much to maintain the farm forest zoning as reasonably possible, considering the only really reasonable use of that area is not for anything other than a couple residential structures. In an area that's suitable for, it's been demonstrated by past use of it, and septic field areas being there, that will be resolved with a proper septic permit, but it's going to require the presby system now, not the in-ground tank system that would have been there before. And then we're back to the four, roughly four acres, which we would like to designate as a five acre use area, and hopefully, ultimately, adjust the lot line to match that up. That's the, make use the existing trailer's been there, but would like to have, and ultimately the target would be to put the office slash residence in that trailer, then it becomes kind of an off-site live-on manager for the boat storage use. Doesn't take a lot of management, but does take some, and that would give us somebody on-site to do that, living there, but most likely would have another job as well, and the on-site manager would be just a part job, not a full-time employment. It's just not enough management required for that type of boat storage. So why boat storage? Tom owns and operates the marina, and he has knowledge and firsthand experience repeatedly of the number of boats that get brought in, put in the water, and trailers had to be hauled home or hauled someplace else. And to find a place reasonably close, on suitable land, that had some historic use in this nature anyway, to do that boat storage, where they can put the boat in the water, take the trailer, drop it off at the boat storage, and leave it there for the season until they're ready to pull the boat out of the water and take it, and related type uses. His mark for that is not the public, it's current boat renters and dock renters at the marina. That's his mark for that. And keep it close at hand, keep those off the road, get good, suitable, well-developed space to be able to park those trailers, or if they pull the boat out of the water for the season and choose not to haul home, that it could be parked there in close proximity to the lake for use again the following season. So there are a lot of advantages to putting the boat storage at this location. It's not inconsistent with really what's been done on this property for many, many years, but now it would be done in accordance with the PUD plan, in an orderly fashion, better design, adherent to concerns for tree, slope, growth, detention facilities. There's a, something of a detention pond back in that same quarter where we're opposing the current detention pond, is about that. Very small, unclear how well it operated in the past, but that's essentially the same area adjacent to it, that the engineer has targeted and done his design for the detention pond that the Drainage Board has reviewed recently. So that, that works. The preference for no paving on the boat storage area is, again, limits how much water runoff we're dealing with, allows with the stone surface, very limited traffic, it's not a daily in and out, it's an in, out, parked for the season for the most part, and out. So, you know, the normal complaints about stone lots of limestone dust or anything like that, just not believed to be applicable. Do see the possibility of a demand for at least some covered boat storage, so that's the reference to possible expansion of a small area that would allow development of a little bit of covered boat storage as opposed to just the open lot storage. It's well back off the road, can be appropriately screened, that those are really development questions, not PUD questions, but it's all doable, it's a good location for it, and the concept of, well, consider an LB straight zoning introduces, I call them evils, introduces adverse issues that I cannot, that you would want, you would support. Limiting that to the boat storage and limiting all other LB uses in that manner, I think would be a positive, if you find it that way. So we'll stop there, and if Tom, you have things you want to add now, or wait to see You'll need to come up, Tom.
Yeah, could you come to the podium, please? You'll have three and a half minutes to speak.
I'm Tom Greenman, and a couple of items. Number one, I don't want this really to be for the public. As for signage, I think a Realtor sign, size sign, I don't want it, people calling us up, we've got a lot to do. We have 10 rental boats that are little enough that we would store them there. We're allowed to store rental boats only at the marina out of the water. So we've got a lot of people with pontoon boats mainly, that are asking, where can I put my trailer? And beyond that, I would have to talk to my insurance company, but I'm even thinking about making our employees put the boats in there, and it'll be fenced in, and I want it to not even be noticed from the highway. The history of the property is pretty colored. It was, behind, where we really want to have the main boat storage was a junkyard for cars. And one of the things we got at the assessor today shows even in 2005, a lot of cars parked there. So we're really taking a place where somebody might not ever want to build a house anyway, and putting trailers in which will be clean. We won't allow any repair in there, any boat repair. So there won't be any runoff of oil or anything like that. And it's going to be fenced in, so some guy that's getting kicked out by his wife won't go live in his boat. He won't be allowed in there. So those are our plans. And the other, there is an existing pond. The existing pond is just off the four acres, and so we thought it was a good idea to make it five, and make the new pond where the old pond is. The old pond is not holding water, so I think the ground probably is sandier than we think right there. And the septic, when I bought the property, I had Todd's septic check the septic. And the septic, I, when I bought the property, I had Todd's septic check the septic, and we had a water leak that created enough problem that the, uh, water company called us, and the septic handled it all and never came up, or we never noticed that we were having a leak. So that's really all I have. Do you have any questions of me?
Yeah, Mr. Pittsford?
Yeah, um, the proposed zoning for the, uh, 10 acres would be, uh, under, um, state residential, which allows, um, one acre lots?
No, no, no. We want to have two lots.
You, you're, you are going to limit it to two lots?
Right. And we'll probably give this to my daughters, one to each of my daughters.
Okay.
That already live in Monroe County, they may want it. I have a son that might want one of them.
Okay.
So we're really not planning on building.
Okay. And that would be consistent with what would be allowed by right under Forest Reserve?
Yes, it's just, it's not clear in the outline plan that that is the intention. So if that's what you're wanting to do, it should be enumerated as such that two lots will be created and how large would those lots be, you know, what uses are permitted in those lots?
Right, well, petitioner's letter states that, I, I, if you, if I might, okay. Petitioner's letter states, uh, as allowed in RE zone, staff report says ER and identifies one acre lot, so I'm thinking for granted those are the same things, different terminology, because it does change. Uh, but if, if petitioner left the 10 acres as Forest Reserve zoning and the PUD was proposing limited business, uh, or whatever on the other, that's a horse of a different collar, am I correct? From what they're offering?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
That's different from what they're offering here. What he just testified to is different from what is in this letter.
Yes, the letter needs to be more detailed about exactly what they want to do.
Okay. Does staff's recommendation change any, other than the fact we don't like PUDs anymore? Does the less intense development of the 10 acres change staff's recommendation?
I can't speak to the full extent of what staff's recommendation would be, but I do believe that, um, some work needs to be done with the level of detail in the outline plan.
And it would have an impact on the way staff views this because there are two different approaches to the use of land in the ECO, ECO three, which is significant.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify on that, Jerry, I don't know that this PUD would rezone it with the ECO provision unless they added that in. Also, I still don't understand why the southern area, if by right they could create two lots under the current zoning designation today, and all they want in the end is two lots, why that would ever be included in the PUD proposal?
That's why I asked the question.
I'm, I'm not understanding, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question, because they're, they're two different things now.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
I was going to say, I think the reason it's a PUD is because it has mixed use, once you add that in. If, if you only have a boat rental place, then it's one use with an office. Right.
And, and if I may, just as a follow-up, I view this entirely differently based on petitioner's assertion that the desire is not to seek development of the, the 10 acre portion of this subdivisions or property. Thank you.
Okay, any other, Mr. Randolph?
Could I have a, kind of a question for petitioner, petitioner representative and also planning? So I'll do my best to kind of run through this. First, I do want to talk about how much time we have spent reducing a, a number of uses in, in petitions in the past. We don't necessarily, uh, we're not necessarily looking at PUD, we're actually just reducing the uses. So it's still like zone limited business, but they can't do XYZ. That has to be even more difficult to, uh, for planning to kind of have oversight and making sure that they're following, uh, kind of what was laid out in there and compliant. We've spent lots of time doing that. The way this is shaking out, and, and they're kind of only wanting one use. So, you know, that is a tool, a PUD is a tool. I would hate to bring this back as a limited business and we strike every use out except for the boat storage. Now that then goes to my question. When did boat, boat storage actually become allowable use? Because this is recent, correct? What, what zone was there allowed boat storage?
So we're recommending the petitioner seek a LB rezone, which is the by right zoning district that allows boat storage.
Was that use added? Because I remember discussing the definition, it, it's fairly new. And Mr. Carmen, if you're familiar with that, please. Right, so, just kind of wanting to kind of bring some context to some of my following questions. Where is the closest boat storage that isn't in a PUD? I'll kind of skip that one. Where is the closest area that is zoned that allows boat storage? Those, those similar questions, but different. You mentioned number of boats, is this accurate? A, a storage facility utilizing enclosed building or, um, outdoor area for seasonal, year-round storage for four or more boats? That's, that's a little vague. So I think a limit on boats could...
Well, there's a drawing, it's, it's got, it's got the number spaces. I'm not sure we can get that many in there.
Right, well, that, I think brings some more specificity to what this PUD is really asking. So if, if you are thinking there's a cap, that would be interesting to know. Obviously, there will always be limitations just with the size.
I think when you count them, it comes out to like 30 or 35, and I'm not sure...
Okay. Just, I wanted to ask the question.
I'm not sure how good people are at parking boats, maybe less.
So...
I know I'm not any good, I can't even park the boats, it's going to be somebody else.
Right. I can't speak for my colleagues, but, um, I, I feel like that would be something that would help me understand kind of what is actually going to occur on this property. And then I guess, I'll, I'll go back to... Is this following all of the boat storage? Because I'm not, you said it's by right, but is it permitted with standards or is it just allowed in limited business?
So the property is not zone limited business right now?
No, no, in a limited business zone, would this be permitted with standards or allowed?
It does have standards. It's item number 41 in chapter 802.
Right, and I guess, thanks, I... Sorry I have to ask questions, I know. It just allows people to understand what I'm getting at. Are they meeting the, the, the permit, the standards, like setbacks, uh, screening? I feel like they're meeting everything except for the unclosed bo, uh, boat storage that is required for where this type of use. I might be wrong, but from my understanding, to allow boat storage, it has to be enclosed. And that was from our work of creating the standards for this allowed use, which was just recently introduced. So what I'm getting at, there's not that many places to store boats. You have to meet standards?
Sorry, I just want to chime in. So the boat storage use was added into the ordinance in 1998, and the definition right now says a storage facility utilizing enclosed buildings and/or unenclosed outdoor areas for seasonal or year-round storage of four or more boats.
Okay. Good night. Thank you. Now, I, I'll go ahead and show kind of my ignorance a little bit here is, that was RB storage or that we were addressing just recently. But I, I think honestly, there's not that many areas zoned in these rural parts of the county that allow this type of use from a permitted with standards perspective. With that all said, you have a large lake that is used for recreational purposes. You look at the aerial, aerials of this property, it was pretty dirty, cluttered, it looks a lot cleaner. I think you've shown your effort of being, you know, a good steward of the property and cleaning it up and, you know, taking that initiative, initiative upon yourself. And supporting something like this, I could, I could almost get behind today due to the fact that people are going to continue to do this, and it's just going to become enforcement cases unless we allow places in the county to provide this service. So that's my conclusion. I'm, I'm going to just, one second. You, you seem like you wanted to mention something, so please...
I wanted to say that driving into town today, we drove past 446, and they got boats that you can see in there everywhere and they're... Then we drove past Hawkeye's Marine, which he's parking them right up. We don't want people, even though we got a boat storage there, that's the point. We don't want people coming in there to try to rob us. We want it to be a secret. We want, I mean, we got a trailer stolen from our parking lot the 4th of July last year. Believe it or not, the DNR caught the guy a year later, but he's not in jail, and he stole a $35, $8,000 boat with our trailer, and he's still not in jail. So it's better to keep it secret.
But I appreciate that comment, that actually kind of goes with several of my questions. Thank you.
We won't tell anyone it's there.
Good.
Do any other members...
It's not just on TV.
Do any other members of the Plan Commission have questions for the petitioner?
Not for the petitioner?
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Greenman, thank you, Mr. Carmen. So we will turn now to public comment. Is there anybody in the room or online who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If you're in the room, please come to the podium. If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. They see no one. If there's anyone who wishes to speak against this petition in the room, I'm assuming not, please come forward, or if you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Okay, we will come back now to the Plan Commission for comments, questions?
I have a question, and this could be either for Mr. Schelling, if he's online, or for you, Ms. Nestor Gellen. It's my understanding that with this PUD, the, um, the boat storage would be the only use that would be allowed on this PUD. In other words, as Mr. Carmen eloquently stated, it's a tighter restriction on the owners than limited business. And, and so the use for these owners on the property would be forever limited to, um, to boat storage. Is that correct?
I believe they stated boat storage with an accessory office, but then within that same lot, I think there was one residence on that property. So it would be residential, single, I, I think, single-family residential and boat storage would be the only two permitted uses.
So I, I find that, uh, I find this to be a very intelligent approach to a complicated property, frankly. I find it to be ecologically remediative, you know, if that's a word. And I find it to be responsible in terms of your stewardship of the Forest Reserve classification. I find that the intensity of, of your request would be lower than that would, which would be permitted by right. And so I am intending to vote in favor of this unless I'm persuaded else by, by my colleagues. If I'm wrong in some way, I, my tendency would be to vote for this with, with appreciation, frankly.
Thank you, Ms. Clemens. Mr. Olman?
Um, question for staff. I'm looking at the CDO and the proposed stuff, and I know this might be a little thinking too forward, but hopefully not too far in the, in the future. But the proposed zoning for that four acre lot to the north is CVR. And when I go in and look at the uses for that, one of the uses for CVR for, in the CDO is residential storage structure. Would gravel lot boat storage? No, not, I'm getting a head shake, that means no, it would not be under... Would boat storage be available under CVR?
No, so the property is currently proposed as CVR, the four acre lot, and then the lot to the south is currently proposed as Forest, um, Forest Residential 5. And the reason is because that northern parcel doesn't meet the five acre minimum requirement for the Forest Residential zoning. So the residential storage structure use is just if you want to put a accessory or basically a storage structure on your property to store your own belongings before you build a primary structure. And it's very limited just to your own items, no commercial transactions can take place.
Okay. Now, in, uh, CVR zoning, how far off base or what would be the possibility of asking for a zoning, what's the term, like petition, a request for adding a boat storage to a CVR zoning in this particular case? Would that be a possibility?
They would petition for what's called a use variance to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, and the bar for getting a staff recommendation for those particular petitions is rather high, given that the requirements of a use variance, it's, there's language about proving that there's a hardship, and that language is often difficult to get around in order to get a positive staff recommendation. That being said, uh, there have been several use variance petitions with a negative staff recommendation where the Board of Zoning Appeals does find it compelling and they do vote, vote in approval of that particular petition.
So, uh, sorry, I'm kind of, my questions do have a direction of travel here. So kind of what I'm hearing off of your statement is that if, you know, CDO goes through, this becomes CVR, that the best course of action would be not a, uh, a use petition, but a rezone to limited business? That, to be able to do boat storage there?
To be able to do boat storage there? To have boat storage and a residence on the same lot, you would have to have a PUD.
Okay. Thank you. If I may finish with a statement, um, I, I, I kind of have to be in very similar camp to, uh, Margaret's comments about, I, I, I don't have the history for the PUD and everything of how PUDs have transpired in Monroe County in the past as some of you guys do, but I do have to say that when I look at the way this property is being used and, um, you know, Tron mentioned a comment about other, how close is the other closest boat storage? I kind of looked at that a little bit when I was inspecting this, and there was one four miles to the north, but that's, there's also two boat ramps in that four miles, and there's two more boat ramps to the south. But above that, my biggest concern when this first came up in, in the docket and when I first started looking at this was the concern about 446. It's, uh, some rather quick traffic through it, and it kind of sits on a bend there. When I drove out there to look, that trip just from Allen Creek, which is, sits maybe half mile to the south, it sits on that bend, but there's quite a significant shoulder there that's pretty well-maintained. And I will add a comment for everybody's consideration that I've, I've tailored a lot of things, and if I, I would feel more than comfortable pulling into that parking lot with a significant trailer because that bend does have pretty good visibility. Um, you know, if, if Highway had a different comment to that, I don't know, but I will say that if a safety was a concern, I, I think it, it, it does pair positively from the safety aspect, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Olman, Mr. Pittsford?
Yeah, just to finish, a thought on Mr. Olman. Highway didn't have any comment on this, Granage didn't have any comment on this, so the, the two bugaboo's in this area have, have been cleared. But obviously by petitioner's statement versus, uh, this evening versus submittal, uh, we're not in sync on what's being presented versus what was intended. And I think the easiest way to move this forward, it will be heard without motion anyway, but I'm going to move denial of their request for final, uh, waiver of final hearing. to move denial of the request for final, waiver of final hearing. So by denying the final hearing waiver, it goes on to the next meeting. So my motion is denial of request for waiver of final hearing.
I'm gonna second that and also say that there's some more specificity that I think could help with this PUD, and I think we alluded to that today. And it sounds like you'll get the support you needed, but let's just get this PUD right.
On that discussion of that item, I'd like to just, you know, suggest that the specificity on the PUD could be heard by the commissioners, and that between now and the time the commissioners hear it, that the petitioner might be able to move forward while the season is good. But my, I just want to say that I would like to approve this with the suggestion that they, they work with staff to finalize the PUD portion before going to the Board of Commissioners. But that's how I feel about it. I know there's a motion and a second on the table, so if we need to take the vote, we can take the vote.
I'm not too against walking back my second, but if you would permit, could we allow the petitioner or the petitioner representative to answer that question as far as time restraints go and the need to get this forward? Because I know the cleaner we can get it to the commissioner, the easier it can move through that process as well.
The petitioner can now, even now, commit to amending the PUD outline plan to specify no more than two residence structures in Area B. That's an easy thing to fix, and ultimately put that in writing as amendment to the outline plan. You asked something else. The specificity about other information as to location of other boat storage units, that, you know, that, no.
No, no. Line was limited on the number of boats that you intend to store, if that's even desired, as far as questions there. But I guess more to the point, would you rather us act today and make those commitments on the fly? I know that's not anything we typically do. Or would you prefer just to come back?
I'll also say that from a staff perspective, we have at least six or seven critical questions unanswered from the petitioner's filing.
Okay, well.
So we recommend a denial. So if you are moving to move forward with a positive recommendation, we would have a lot of questions for the petitioner to clean this up, to make it ready.
We would prefer to come back next month.
Perfect.
We'll do that.
All right, then I'll call the question in my second stance.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So Jackie, if you could go ahead and call the roll.
Okay, and so this vote is to deny the petitioner's request for a waiver of final hearing. So this will essentially be continued to the next meeting, which will be set up September twenty-sixth. Thank you. Because of budget hearings, it's not on the third Tuesday.
Would that be our CDO date?
No, our CDO date is September twenty-fourth.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
It's gonna be a busy week.
Yes, okay, that's fine.
All right, so it'll be continued to Thursday, September twenty-sixth.
So it's a Thursday instead of a Tuesday?
Call the, I'll call the roll on it to see if everyone agrees. So a vote yes is a vote to deny the waiver of final hearing and continue it to September twenty-sixth. Jeff Morris?
Yes.
Cheryl Munson?
Yes.
Edward Olman?
Yes.
Dee Owens?
Yes.
Jerry Pittsford?
Yes.
Thomas? Margaret Clemens? Trana Ray Randolph?
And a thank you to Mr. Morris for allowing me to engage again with the petitioner.
Scott Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, thank you all. We'll see you back on September twenty-sixth, you said, Jackie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carmen, Mr. Green.
As far as I may, I know this may be a little bit out of regular rules, but I will more than likely not be here in the September twenty-sixth meeting. But I just wanted to stress that, you know, I think if efforts are made to clean this up, and I think that it sounds like the efforts are being made, that I think that this is going in the right direction. My statement still stands that I support the idea of a PUD being used on this property, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Olman. So moving on to case REZ-24-6, the Patterson rezone from PB to ER. This is the preliminary hearing with the waiver of final hearing requested. Drew, I'll turn it back over to you for the third time.
Thank you. This property is located at thirty-four seventy-eight South Knight Ridge Road. It is one two-point-one-three acre parcel in Salt Creek Township, section seventeen. And the request is to rezone from pre-existing business to estate residential. The petition site is currently vacant and is mostly wooded. In 2023, the petitioner removed all pre-existing non-conforming residential structures, including a manufactured home, via demolition permit. In May of 2024, the petitioner submitted a residential pole barn structure permit to construct a forty-foot by eighty-foot residential accessory structure. Upon review by staff, it was communicated to the petitioner that the residential uses are not permitted in the PB zoning district, and that a rezone will be required. Additionally, residential storage structures are limited to a square footage when there is no primary residence on the subject property. With this information, the petitioner submitted a rezone application and indicated to the staff that they will adjust their construction plans of the accessory structure to include a dwelling unit. Including a dwelling unit in the construction plans will allow, will require a new residential building permit application, which requires the submission of a certified plot plan, but does allow them to construct the storage structure with any size instead of being limited. Due to the lot size of two-point-one-three acres, the petitioner chose to rezone the property to estate residential, which requires only one acre to develop. Zoning map amendment would rezone the property from pre-existing business to estate residential if approved. And the definitions I have included of those districts in this presentation. So here is the pre-existing business district, the estate residential district definitions. The draft zoning map of the county development ordinance indicates the subject property will transition into the conservation residential two-point-five zone, or CVR, if not rezoned under this petition. However, the property exhibiting only two-point-one-three acres, it would automatically require a minimum lot size variance in order to develop. If the property is rezoned to estate residential under chapter eight oh two with this application, the CDO will likely transition the property into a similar district known as the residential one zone, or RES. On the right side of the screen, I have a table that talks about height, bulk, area, and density comparisons between the estate residential zone and the pre-existing business zone. I will note, staff is unsure, was unable to determine if a prior business did operate on this specific parcel. The history is a little clouded. However, staff was able to determine that, was not able to determine, excuse me, staff is under the assumption that the original zoning of this lot to pre-existing business at the nineteen ninety-seven zoning ordinance may have likely been involved with a known prior business that was adjacent to this parcel to the west. So it's likely that that business owned both of these parcels in the past, and that's how it got zoned pre-existing business in the first place. This did go to the Plan Review Committee on July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, for discussion. Board members asked related questions about the property, whether or not a business use would be pursued after the rezone, and the answer to that was no. The petitioner does not intend to operate a business on this property after the rezone. And the PRC members voted six to zero to forward this petition to the Plan Commission with a positive recommendation. So here we have the location map of the parcel in question, as well as the zoning map. You will note that the pink area is the pre-existing business, and there is a small sliver of forest reserve on the bottom side. I was unable to determine if that was a function of the parcel lines on the elevate, or if that is actually split-zoned. It's difficult to determine. But a rezone, or the CDO process would clean this up either way. Here is the buildable area depiction for the property. Here we have the letter to the Plan Commission stating their request. I will note also that this property is located in the environmental constraints overlay, area three. So back to that slope map, it's slopes greater than eighteen percent that are protected from any land disturbance. Here we have a conceptual site plan that was submitted by the petitioner. And again, as I stated, the intent of having the dwelling established in the same structure will trigger the need for a certified plot plan that is required for all new residential building permit applications. So it'll be a little bit more accurate and more detailed as it is required to be certified by a licensed professional surveyor or civil engineer. I also included the use tables for the pre-existing business zone, as well as the state residential zone. As you may note, in the past, with your knowledge of the pre-existing business, there is a lot of uses available to the pre-existing business zone based on the level of intensity of the current use. Given that the current use was residential but now vacant, that intensity would be low. So all of the uses that you see on the left table are the uses that are available on that property as zoned pre-existing business. On the right is the use table of uses that are available to the state residential zone. Again, the property owner is stating that they are simply wanting to construct a residential storage structure and a dwelling on this property to be used as such. Okay, that brings me to staff's recommendation. Staff recommends forwarding a positive recommendation to the Monroe County Board of Commissioners based on the petition's compatibility with Monroe County Conference of Plan and subject to the Highway Engineer and MS Four Coordinator reports. I will now take any questions.
Members of the Plan Commission have questions for Drew? Doesn't look like it, Drew, thank you. So we can turn now to the petitioners or the petitioner's representatives. If there's anything you'd like to say, you're welcome to come to the podium, or if you're online, please raise your virtual hand, and we'll allow you to speak. Okay, thank you. Easy enough. We can turn now to public comment portion. If there's anybody online who wishes to speak for or against this petition, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one, we'll come back to the Plan Commission for questions, comments, or a motion.
Pick me.
Mr. Pittsford?
I have a motion, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I thought we'd already closed.
Okay.
All right. Sorry about that. In case REZ-2426, this is a request for rezone from pre-existing business to estate residential with a request for waiver of final hearing. This petition is located at thirty-four seventy-eight South Knight Ridge Road in Salt Creek Township, consisting of two-point-one-three acres plus or minus. It is my motion that we forward this to the County Board of Commissioners with a positive recommendation based on staff report and the petition's compatibility with Monroe County Comprehensive Plan and subject to the Highway Engineer and MS Four Coordinator reports. I further add that this motion would include a waiver of final hearing. That is my motion in sum.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to send a favorable recommendation of petition REZ-24-6, which is a rezone request from pre-existing business to estate residential and a waiver of final hearing. This is a request to send a favorable recommendation to the Commissioners. A vote yes is a vote to send the favorable recommendation. Cheryl Munson?
Yes.
Edward Olman?
Yes.
Dee Owens?
Yes.
Jerry Pittsford?
Yes.
Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Margaret Clemens?
Yes.
Trana Ray Randolph?
Yes.
Scott Ferris?
Yes.
Jeff Morris?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved, nine to zero.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie, and thank you both for coming out tonight. I believe that is the last item on the agenda. Item SPP-24-2 is continued. So Jackie, do you have any reports for us tonight?
So we sent out thirty-nine thousand five hundred postcards.
Yay.
We got one text message.
So just for anyone in the public that's listening, our county development ordinance hearing is September twenty-fourth at five-thirty in this room, and we will also host a hybrid option on Teams. We've had a great rock star planner of the day scheduled going on since Friday. Our planners are all hands on deck, doing a great job answering the public's questions, and has been able to keep up. It has been busy. So we appreciate your patience and your work in reviewing the CDO. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Jackie, and you and your staff for keeping up with all the questions.
I have a question. Are we going to have an executive committee meeting regarding the budget before you go to the council?
We can, I can send that out. I did send something to Jeff, but let me go ahead and just send something to you all.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, Mr. Schelling, I believe you're online. Do you have any legal reports for us tonight?
Let me promote Mr. Schelling. I think his attendance status isn't, okay, let's... Okay, Mr. Schelling should be able to unmute himself at this point.
Mr. Schelling, do you have any legal reports for us tonight?
Dave, you'll have to press unmute on your computer, iPad, if you're there.
I'm going to assume there are no legal reports tonight. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.